Yeah, we have a great.
Well, good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, January eighth, two thousand and twenty. Happy New Year to everybody. Um, this is the tri-town meeting of the three towns, Bolton, Stowe, and Lancaster. A long time coming. I think it's been, what, almost two years since we've had the last tri-town meeting?
Two years, November.
Yeah.
November seventeen, last November.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, so welcome, everybody. Um, we have a lot on the agenda, and perhaps maybe to start off, uh, we can go around the room and just introduce ourselves. Some of us know each other, some of us may not know each other very well. We want to start in the back of the room and kind of go around, and we'll get up here. You want to?
Sure.
Please.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Joseph Kalison. I'm one of the Lancaster representatives of the Neshoba Regional School Board, Mr. Page.
Great, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Brian Boyle on the Bolton Finance Committee.
Thank you, Aaron. On the Bolton Finance Committee.
I don't know why I have to stand, Brian.
You don't have to stand, that's okay.
Kathy Cody and Lancaster representative to the school committee and also the school committee chair.
Brooke Blanchey, superintendent of schools.
Joan De Angelis, director of pupil personnel services with Neshoba Regional Schools.
Pat Maroney, I'm the business manager for the schools.
Rob Rezik, director of facilities for Neshoba Regional.
Todd McGuire, assistant superintendent of schools.
Walter Sandrowski, selectman of Lancaster.
Stan Schar, selectman of Lancaster.
Jay Moody, selectman of Lancaster.
Stan Wysocki, selectman of Bolton.
Bob Sikansky, selectman of Bolton.
John Wells, Bolton Town Administrator.
Jonathan Keat. Selectmen in Bolton, sorry.
Great, well, thank you very much for all of everybody tonight. It's kind of getting kind of cold out there, so appreciate you coming out. Uh, we have a number of items on the agenda. Uh, I guess one of the main things that we're here is to maybe have an initial discussion about the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, Neshoba Regional School District budget, uh, in terms of where perhaps things stand at the moment. I always do a couple items, this will need, you know, where we stand with, capital, expected revenue, and the thing that's near and dear to all of our hearts is sort of the, uh, maybe preliminary allocations to each of the towns. So I don't know who from the.
I'm, I'm gonna start, and then I'll turn it over to Pat Maroney. That would be okay?
Sure, that's fine.
Great, thank you. So, um, again, it, it's not generally our custom, um, customary practice to present to you folks prior to presenting to our school committee. So we haven't made a formal presentation to our school committee because, uh, I believe it's January twenty-fifth.
Yep.
That we'll have the workshop, and at that point in time, and we've done this every year since I've been here, and I think did it even before I came. Um, we go through all the various budget lines, the various units, uh, for over an entire morning. We generally start around eight o'clock in the morning, and we go through to about one o'clock in the afternoon, and we talk through everything. So, so tonight is just to kind of give you a broad overview, uh, of kind of where we're at. Revenue, of course, is hard for us right now to, to know because no numbers are out that, that, that are linked to us. So that really puts us in an awkward place to say, well, we think it might be this for, for any of you because we, we don't know. We have no idea right now. So we have to wait for those house one numbers to come out, of course. Um, I know that Rob Rezik is gonna talk about capital items. Um, again, we generally go to each of our communities, as you well know, and talk about the capital items with the various committees that we work with. And so we'll be starting that process as well. Uh, but tonight, I think we wanted to highlight some of the, the high school. Um, this comes from some of the capital items from the high school, and so we had a flavor of where we're headed with that. Um, our bud, and, and I think, uh, Pat will speak to our budget a little bit. Uh, last year, I think we started in December, we were around eight percent higher as a differential. Uh, this year, we were a little bit around ten percent, which we almost way too high. And so, you know, we've been whittling down, whittling down, whittling down, and we still have a ways to go. Um, you know, we'll, you'll see us, um, break that and play in the next two weeks prior to our meeting with the workshop. We'll probably have a little bit more after that point in time, too, because that's when the school committee can ask their questions or say, we don't support this or that. And so you'll see some changes come after that particular meeting as well. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Pat, and he can do a, a bit of a broad overview with, between you and Rob here.
Okay. Um, first, I'd like to say that, um, I'd, I'd like to thank all of the administrators that, um, in our district that have put together the numbers. It's a lot of work, and I've got, always asked them to be very thoughtful about, you know, what they, what their asks are, and, um, that they have to keep the community in mind. Um, right now, we're in seven point nine one percent increase in the budget. Um, we have some work to do. And, and we have some initiatives that we need to think about how we're going to fund. Um, I'd also like to say that, um, we've lost some additional grant funding. It seems like every year we lose a little bit more, and that is going to be reflected in our numbers. Um, we, um, this year, also, uh, presenting, um, the school committee voted to, um, fund the, um, full-day kindergarten, and we're going to fund that with a stabilization fund. Um, we believe that we're in a position this year that we can fund the gap year. I don't know if you understand what the gap year is, but the, um, this, the state is always a year behind funding as far as for the students. So we're get, we get money in fiscal year twenty for students, uh, for, uh, the population in fiscal year nineteen. So, um, that being said, um, increasing to the full-day kindergarten would be, um, probably about six hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. That's approximate. And, um, we decided, um, we have, in our budget this year, you will see, um, that we have, um, taken some money from some revolving funds that we have. We found that we weren't going to use those funds. We let them sit there for a couple of years, and now we've determined that this is probably the best use for these. Um, and again, I said that, um, the school committee has voted these numbers, but we believe that we have the funds available within our, our own, um, funds and without coming to the towns for the full-day kindergarten. Um, continuing to fund OPEB, and that is one other item that we're putting some additional funding in for OPEB this year. Also coming from the revolving funds. That was, um, very important to the school committee, that we continue to whittle away at what our liability is there. And as far as high school debt goes, um, you'll see that we have the, um, it's about fif, almost fifty-eight thousand dollars is the payment that we'll have to make on the debt, the additional debt for the oil, um, the leach, the leach field and the oil tank replacement that we had to do over the summer. That project is complete, and, um, the first payment for that would come in fiscal year twenty-one. That will also be in, in our budget.
So is that a five-year term?
Yes. Uh, no, no, it's a ten-year, a ten-year. And, um, we're gonna look at that every year, and, and again, um, we've had some requests that we maybe look at fund, you know, paying that off a little bit if we have surplus funds at the end of the year. And we are considering that.
We, we said that right at the beginning of this process, Pat, and when we talked about the oil, uh, tank and the leach field, that we knew it was gonna be around five, six hundred thousand, and we said, you know, we wanted to make a commitment to make sure that we paid that off as quickly as we could if funds were available. Uh, we're waiting for our certification for E and D, and then when that happens, uh, probably within the next month or month and a half or something like that, we'll take that, that money, that, the numbers to our school committee, uh, with our suggestions of what we would, we would encourage them to think on. But we see ourselves being able to pay as part of that, that overall number down this year. I think the grand total was, I want to say four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred thousand, no, I think it was right around the five hundred thousand mark, the combined projects.
Yes.
So it was under what we anticipated it was going to be. So we were very pleased with that. And both projects came in. Rob can speak to this in a minute if you've got questions. I think that both projects were relatively smooth. You had a couple little glitches along the way, but the, they were typical glitches, like when we, well, not really typical, but things that you'd expect, you know, stuff, some stuff's gonna go wrong. For example, when they first started to dig, to, uh, to do the leach field up in the upper field, um, they came across, I don't, I don't even know how to describe it, Rob.
To debris field, I think. When they built the, the athletic fields, you know, all of the trees that they had cut down, the stumps, uh, you know, they just kind of pushed it into one corner. Unfortunately, that's where the leach field was gone.
So that was kind of like one of those little glitch moments where you said, okay, well, what can we do? And then we were able to just move the field over, was it fifteen feet or something like that?
About four, we just shifted it.
Just shifted it. And so we were able to, to do it. But so those are the only kinds of little glitches that we had. Everything else went really quite smoothly. Um, so everything's complete now, Rob.
Yes.
And so we feel that they were good projects, and now we've got the money. And exactly as we had said right at the beginning, the town administrators, uh, when we talked about this, we knew that the first payment would not be until this, this fiscal year, so we knew that. And that's what she's referring to.
Could I ask a couple questions here, please?
Sure.
Perhaps, um, I think I heard the re-budget was four hundred and eighty thousand on the leach field slash oil.
The total.
I agree with you. Would that work?
The total that we, and we ended up borrowing, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I missed, you may have said it. I'm sorry, I may have.
Yeah, so what was the?
Four hundred and eighty, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, and one hundred and eighty?
No.
Four.
Four hundred.
Four, okay, that's right. Okay, so four eighty. How much was that expended? Were we finally done with that work?
All of it, including four hundred and eighty thousand.
Right on the button. Four eighty?
A bit over, a bit.
Four eighty, pay.
We actually expected it would be closer towards six hundred, to be honest.
Initially, I know you mentioned that.
Right. And so we, we were really quite pleased that it came in where it came in.
Yeah, and I heard, Cat, I think you mentioned something about the stabilization fund, using it temporarily. Will that be replenished? Is that what Bolton's plan is to use, or is that your?
We don't have a stabilization fund for the oil field, uh, any, um, facilities. We only have.
Yeah, so about the early, the, uh, early kindergarten.
Oh, okay.
Situation. I got a couple items, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in here. I'm a jet lag, so you've got, just got one last, next one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, with that being said, I heard you say stabilization borrowing. Was that correct?
Yes.
For what purpose, and would that be replenished once the state reimburses the following year?
No, we wouldn't need it anymore after that. We, um, actually, we applied to the state for a special, um, stabilization fund for the full-day kindergarten. And we, we're funding it with revolving funds and E and D.
It'll be self-funding?
And there's one, um, in, in fiscal year twenty-one, there is, um, in fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, there were also funding, there was funding for, um, the full-day kindergarten, and that's how we come up with the full six hundred.
I'm almost afraid to ask this last question, but relative to the OPEB, what's the target needed currently? I know it moves every year a week, but is there a ballpark number? I know what our town has needs for, just shy of three million and change. What's the impact on the school?
The total, the grand total, it's, it's over forty thou, a forty million.
Forty million.
It's over forty. I think it's around forty.
We're probably well on our way to fund that, I suppose.
The budget?
No, 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 not the budget. He's asking what, what's the total liability for OPEB. Oh, for OPEB, yeah, it's like forty-one something, and, and we're actually in, in the middle of a new valuation, so this is.
It'll change tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm sure it will change.
And the amount funded today is?
How much we got in that account right now?
Yes.
Five hundred?
I, I want to say it's around, I was, I would say it's between four and five hundred right now.
Okay, so we're almost there, right?
Yeah.
No, I'm just, I don't know, I know it's huge, but you gotta start.
Yeah, but prior to, four years ago, there was zero, there was zero toward OPEB. So in the last four years, we've, um, budgeted for it and also, um, created our, our trust that, that the money's in, so it can earn interest.
And that, actually, I think we, we ended up going with the same folks that you did.
Yeah, the easiest part's always been to open up an account. The hard part is to fund it.
But we've been, we've been steady with that. We have been steady in terms of, we have put in money from our budget, and we've also put in some additional funds. And that's what we're talking about when you see the, the certified, um, E and D come back, and you'll see us come forward, taking with our, to our school committee with both.
Just out of curiosity and the bigger picture, do other school systems have the same sort of disparity of challenge?
Oh, gosh, yes. And, and many of them have got zero in their fund.
That's expected, unfortunately. Yeah, thank you. No further questions. Your honor.
So are we paying annually, are we paying into it what is recommended?
No.
Or we're just putting in a number that we can do?
We're doing a very low.
That, that's right. We're putting in, in a number that we feel we can comfortably do.
What is the recommended amount?
I believe it's over a million.
It's gonna be over a million, yeah.
A year, okay. Gotta be a million. It's a thirty-year, thirty-five-year plan?
It's either thirty-five.
So if we grow up to three or four percent, you gotta be over a mil a year.
I think it's, I wanna say it's like, well, one point one.
Yeah, that sounds probably right. That is, yeah. That sounds right. Um, Pat, as far as the debt goes, how long, uh, do we have an opportunity to refinance any of it?
Every year.
Oh, we do, okay.
Okay, so I think, is that it for, Pat, for a broad overview for?
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay. Um, and Rob, do you wanna, you and Pat, wanna talk about capital items from?
Sure. Um, just to touch base, um, we talked about the leach field, the oil tank. Um, when the cost estimates, when we're working with the engineers, you know, they gave us cost estimates for the project, and then when we finally went out to bid, the, the actual bid prices were way above what the cost estimates were. Um, so we did some creative, we, with the leach field, we did some work in-house to try to get that number down, uh, which we were able to do, you know, to save money. And with the oil tank project, uh, one of the things that we couldn't complete because we didn't have the funding to do it was the removal of the old oil tank. So that's one of the capital items that's, you know, going forward this year.
How much for that, Rob?
The bid came in, because we had a bid alternate for that, and the bid alternate was twenty-five thousand. I bumped that number up to thirty thousand just because of, you know, cost increases. Hoping it'll be, you know, around there when, you know, when it comes time to do that and soon as school gets out. Another big project, uh, at the high school is, um, the track. It needs to, every seven to eight years, there's a structural wear layer that needs to be reapplied to the track surface. Um, so you have your base asphalt layer, then there's a thicker rubber layer, and then there's a structural wear layer to keep the integrity of the track in place. Um, and we're at that threshold right now, where we need to have that structural wear layer resprayed. Right now, we're looking probably at a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, um, but I believe we're gonna be using, um, stabilization fund money to offset some of that, so that way it won't be, you know, as much of a burden to the.
We've been proactive with that for the, again, last three years. Um, we set up a stabilization fund, knowing that this was coming, and have been putting money into that every year. So there's some funds there that we will use to offset that.
Appreciate that they went in, that it went in was this year, because when we vote, it has to be approved, stabilization has to be approved by the member towns. So it appeared in our budget last year. That was the first payment. Now we're, we have, we'll have it in fiscal year twenty-one, and we'll be using some of that, but it's, we're going to continue to do that because at some point in the future, they will, we will have to replace the entire carpet.
Correct. The carpet on the track itself.
Yes.
Um, some other infrastructure items that we have, um, along the front driveway, when you pull in off of Green Road, and you pull in the front of the school, there's a series of catch basins that are starting to fail. Uh, they're actually starting to cavitate, which is, you know, poses a, you know, safety issue for people stepping off a walkway if they get, you know, caught in there. And also, that's where the buses come down to pick the kids up. So, you know, just the weight of the buses driving over those manhole covers or sewer, you know, sewer drain covers. You know, we could have an issue with one of them really collapsing. Um, get some asphalt repair around that. So we're looking, um, about twenty-two thousand dollars for that. On the auditorium side of the building, there's a sewer rejection pump station, um, that takes the sewer from that side of the building and pumps it down to the sewer treatment plant over on the student lot side. And there's a rail system that holds the pumps and the floats and everything in place. That's almost completely rotted away, uh, so that's something that needs to be addressed. We'll replace it with a stainless steel system, so it'll be there for a long time. Um, we're looking at about twenty-two thousand dollars for that as well. There's some upgrades that we need to make to the sewer treatment plant. Uh, the filter modules that are in place now are starting to fail. They basically look like spaghetti strings, and that collects a lot of the debris. And those spaghetti strings, like you said, are starting to fail, so we're getting a lot of contamination within the system. Um, so those need to be replaced, about thirty-five thousand dollars for that. There's another, it's, it's an upgrade that we would like to do to help the water booster system, the longevity of it. Basically, we don't know, you know, obviously, what's gonna happen with the building with, you know, the new school. So we're gonna put VFDs onto the water booster station to help the longevity of that, because if that fails.
And that's for what?
VFDs, variable frequency drives. Because right now, when the water calls, it goes basically from zero to a hundred. So putting the VFDs on, they will adjust that based off of the demand. Uh, so it'll lessen the load and, you know, the life expectancy of that. Without, you know, not knowing what that building's gonna be, you know, in the next six to seven years, uh, if that system goes down, it's gonna be a significant, uh, repair or, or replacement for that.
So, so these are the pumps you're talking about?
Well, replacing the pumps. It's, it's the drive motors and, like I said, the VFDs to just extend the life of the pump system that's there right now.
Where, where do the VFDs go? Are they after the pumps or?
On the, on the pump station itself.
Okay. So they push the water up from the pump through the building?
It'll, it, it controls the, basically, the RPMs of the pump itself.
Oh, okay.
It's like I said, so right now, when it costs water, it goes from zero to a hundred, and adding those VFDs will, you know, slow that down and, um, basically give you on-demand instead of, you know, taxing it out at a hundred percent, when we don't really need to. And there'd be energy savings there as well.
Price back on that one?
Eighteen dollars for the tank, yeah.
I could say twenty-two.
What's that?
I thought you said twenty-two.
You know, that, that's basically what we have for the high school. There's a lighting project that we'd like to do off of Green Road. Uh, as soon as you pull off of Green Road, um, there was a light pole there at one point that had got knocked over, uh, years ago, and with all the events going on and people parked, you know, on both sides there, it, it's become a safety concern when people walking around during bigger events. So we're looking, they have the light pole back there, which is for better visibility.
It's pretty dark.
Yeah. Which is about six to seven thousand for that.
Anything else, Rob? Yeah, I, I didn't know if you wanted me to carry forward with the, the next item on.
Uh, the MSBA.
Uh, what? The assessments?
Anything about the assessments?
Well, I don't think we have anything yet about the assessments, because it's too.
Without our revenue.
With all the revenue projections, we don't know.
I just wanted to add that Bolton has something that we refer to as the finance team, um, which is different than a finance committee. And we met yesterday, and it's defined as town accountant, town treasurer, uh, chairman of the advisory committee. We have selectmen's representatives, board of assessors, obviously myself, town clerk. I'm trying to forget. I think I may be forgetting.
Treasurer, accountant?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Um, and when I met with, when the TAs all met with work back in November, uh, and she asked us, you know, what we were looking at for, what we could tolerate within the budget, I had said, you know, we can't hit four percent. And we've gone over, we've done our first pass modeling, and Brian, please jump in whenever you want. We quickly came to the conclusion, we, we can't take an ass, we can't take an assessment to Bolton higher than three percent. Four percent's out of the question for us. Uh, we're in really, really bad shape, you know. I, I said last year, after we had the assessments done, that, that we, that we couldn't have the same type of assessment increase last year, you know, it just wasn't sustainable, and the numbers are, are proving that out. And we're being, you know, being very conservative in our budgeting, uh, but, um, we're, we're just, we're gonna be in a really, really tough spot.
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in, Don, if you're throwing that. And, and we're very similar numbers. We, we have our FinCon that makes these decisions among the life, and it's almost exactly the same number, three point something, but for all intents and purposes, three. Anywhere that, we go into deficit state, as we had last year, and we had to use stabilization. It's a last-minute relief from some filming in town. It's not gonna happen again. You can't count on that one. So we're pretty much hard and fast with Bolton's, uh, assessment of three percent, and it's still a deficit.
Right, well, even with that, we're still, we're close to four hundred thousand in the hole, uh, with, with the numbers we have. So we have to find.
We'd be.
I mean, we're looking at capital requests that we know, where, right now, I, I've got every capital request there is on my desk. And I already know we're not gonna fund all of them. It's a matter of how much we, we carve out, but. So the direction that I gave to our accountant yesterday was to use three percent as a plug-in with all of our, for all of our modeling.
Yeah, same is, same as us.
MSB?
MSBA?
MSBA.
Yeah, awesome. Um, so, a, as you well know, the, the school, uh, committee had approved last year for us to submit a statement of interest to MSBA with regards to the high school. And we did, um, we didn't get queued up. We got close, and they sent a team in to do, um, a walk-through of the building. They drew some people that are from New York. Um, we had a team that walked the building, and it was basically to just kind of check on the SOI, like, please, please, everything that they said in the SOI, is that true? Is that, you know, they were just kind of walking through, just verifying it. Um, and they knew right away, and they said, yes, like, this is a building that's, that's urgent, you know, urgently needs some good care. And, um, so we knew that that was really successful. Uh, when we didn't get queued up, they called right away and said the SOI was strong enough to just do a literal resubmission if the school committee chose to resubmit. So we did that. Uh, the school committee took a vote, and we added a couple of the major things, like the leach field, the oil tank, and all those, the bigger projects that, that had failed in the year. We added that to the pre-existing SOI and did submission. And then we didn't really hear anything until, I think, end of November, I think, and, and they, they called and said, um, we'd like you to, to take part in a readiness call. And I said, okay, and I didn't know what that looked like. I didn't know what it was. And so they said, you bring in a team of people in. So we have some school committee members come in, a couple of different, um, folks from our team, uh, our school district team, and we sat in, and basically, it was just the opportunity to say, do you think you're really ready for this? Like, are you ready for the work? Are you ready for the, you know, all the things that are gonna come with this? That doesn't mean that we're ready to finance or anything like that. Just are you up to this type of project, right? And we felt that the call went really well. We were really pleased with the call. Uh, and then that was kind of it, and then the next call we got was the call to invite us to their meeting. And, um, they said, we're, we're not saying that you're getting anything other than we, we're gonna put your, potentially put your names forward for the eligibility period. So we drove in that morning, um, since we all left here at six o'clock in the morning and drove in, and there were sixty-one projects that were applications that were made for the core, which is the type of project we were looking at, because we're not looking just at HVAC system or roofing or windows. We're looking at like a meter, major modernization or new build. And that's called a core. There's, there were sixty-one projects across the state, and they put eleven forward, and we were one of the eleven. So they moved that forward at that meeting. That was very exciting for us. And then they immediately took us from there, once that, that, uh, vote was taken, into orientation meeting, and basically laid some things up for us. This is not to be confused with a feasibility study, because that's not what this is. This is an eligibility period. We've got a series of things. Each one of these pieces is like a module unto itself, the various stages of the, the process, whatever that is, whether it's modernization or a build. The communities at any point in time can say, well, we have no interest in doing this, and can shut it down at any point in time. So there's nothing taken for granted here. There's no, like, there's no assumptions made at all. So the eligibility period, there are like checklist of things that we need to do. And one of those things, for example, is that we need an education plan prepared. And so we had already seen that coming potentially long before we got accepted and queued up for the eligibility period. So we had already orchestrated for somebody to come in who has experience of doing this and working with our staff to start to lay out an education plan. And then that plan moves forward for the entirety of the project, for however long that project is. Um, so our high school staff will start that work this month. Our, we're having another meeting on Thursday, I think. And it's basically trying to envision and say, what, what does education look like in, uh, Neshoba for the next decade and beyond? What does that look like? So we're excited about that work. Um, we, we have to kind of finish the checklist before MSBA takes another vote to say whether we can go out for a feasibility study or not. So it's not that we're in this eligibility period and we go immediately to do a feasibility study. There are, there are very specific processes. And we have been very clearly warned that if we get ahead of ourselves, we will automatically be pulled from being queued up. We want that. So we will do, so we are good rule followers for followers anyway, so we'll follow exactly what MSBA tells us to. There are, in essence, two time periods for votes through this process. The first is for the feasibility at study itself, which I know everybody in this room knows about. They're anticipating that it will be around that million-dollar mark in one point two nine. That's kind of what they're estimating. That vote probably would take place within the next two years. The second vote that happens in this type of a process is the next five to seven years. And that's when the, the communities make the decision of what pathway they're gonna take. It's clearly outlined. We've completed all the appropriate modules with MSBA, and only at that point in time, again, would another vote happen, and then you would go out and look for, um, funding for whatever that is. So you really wouldn't start digging, for example, even if you were really good, uh, you know, for at least the next five, five to six years type thing. So that's the type of timeline that they've, they've given us, and that's the process that they've talked to us about. So I don't know if you have any questions on that. Bob?
When do, when do you have, when does the district have to make a decision on going forward with a feasibility study? And how are the towns involved?
And how are the towns involved in that decision?
So I, I don't know that I have an answer for you on that because, again, we'll do whatever the approaches that they tell us to, to take. And I'm not sure if there are templates or procedures that they've got for us to do, I assume that they do. We are working with the regional school district specialist, but that's who they've put us with. So I'm sure that there's very specific guidelines that are laid out for us that we're just not aware of yet, because we're not that close yet.
There's, there's not a deadline to get this?
Two years.
So you have two years to have a vote on the, on the?
Feasibility study.
Feasibility study, alright, I thought it was like nine months or something like that.
No. There is a nine-month deadline though for something else, I can't quite recall what it is. We, and my understanding to, and again, this is all new to us, so, you know, I hope I didn't do all the right information as I'm thinking this through. We're not starting work with them either until after June twenty twenty. And that's because they've taken these eleven projects and basically strategically placed them, like one after the other, so that we're not all starting at the same time. So we won't really start our work, so I think that that's why when I say the two years, we're really not starting our work with MSBA until after June twenty twenty.
So the feasibility study is not necessarily, whether you need something or not, is the feasibility study more renovation or construction? Is that, is that what the study?
I think, my understanding is that that's when you take a look and say, okay, let, the feasibility study should offer, and Bob, you might be able to speak more of this, and I get options that are available to the communities to take a look at. So, I mean, I don't think that anyone goes into this just making the assumption this is a new building, I mean, I know that Rob said that, but that's not our assumption. You know, we'll do whatever our communities want us to do, if they wanna do an age renovation program, then we can do that too. If they wanna do nothing, then we can do that too, so, yeah. So that, I, I think the feasibility study part and parcel is to offer the, the options that make the most amount of sense to the communities.
I know it's a million-dollar question, a multi-million dollar question.
Multi-million, yeah.
What's the estimation of?
You know.
How many years of our?
So, you know what, I really, in, in terms of the total project? So we were really guided to not give any type of answers on that, and I under, I really do understand, just like, we were also guided to not give percentages of what the percentage might be for.
The reimbursement? I was about to ask you that second.
Okay, so great, so I, I'm not gonna respond to that either.
Thanks a lot. It's very insightful.
Well, actually, you know what, once you sit there, and Catherine, feel free to jump in if I'm missing anything, but, or Rob, because I know you were, and you were there too, but my understanding, and I hope I get this right, my understanding is that MSBA kind of has like a bottom line, I wanna say three hundred and thirty dollars, don't hold me to this, three hundred and thirty dollars a square foot, that they would put, let's say, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent towards. Except though, that's not what most projects cost, most projects cost more than that. So if they say, if we were to say, let's say fifty, just for the sake of giggles, because I know that that's not what it's gonna be, but let's say it's fifty. It's really not fifty percent of, let's say, your schools are gonna cost, or your project's gonna cost five hundred a square. It's really fifty percent of the three hundred and thirty because that's the, the bottom line. Anything else about that would be picked up by the communities. So it's really, i- it's not, I can understand why they don't want you to put numbers out at this point in time because it's just far too soon to do that, because we really don't know what we're going to do.
And you know the heightened sensitivity relative to on-demand stores recently, and the impact that has on the community's tax rate.
Please know that we understand that fully.
Brian?
Just to clarify on the timeline, because I wanna make sure, this came up the meeting last night of the finance committee? I wanna make sure we didn't give any wrong information. So when we looked at the MSBA letter?
Yeah.
It said that there was a local vote authorization required by February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. And then a feasibility study agreement by February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. So is, am I just misunderstanding about what that means?
But we, we have to make sure that, that everything that we've done has been done first, and then MSBA has taken their vote, and then we can take our vote.
Right, but so, to assume that all of that has to happen within two hundred and seventy days is not correct? It depends on whether they do what they need to do?
I think it depends on if everybody has done what they needed to do.
Right, but I thought you just said we had two years.
Does, does the clock, is there a chance that the clock starts again?
I think, I think you're right, I, my understanding is that that's why I gained, don't hold me to this, but I think it goes back to that June twenty twenty thing.
Got it.
As opposed to the date of this letter thing, but, don't, please don't hold me to that, but that's my understanding.
Well, you know, if you could get some clarification on that particular issue, I know we're preoccupied with it here in Bolton.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. Any other questions on that? I, I know it's a lot, and it's a lot that's thrown out there, and I hope that I'm speaking correctly with everything. Have you seen the letter, the letter that he's talking about?
Um, I don't think I.
Okay, I, you know, I'll, I'm happy to forward that out to the folks.
Okay, alrighty, we're done with that, I guess Lancaster had put on the agenda, I'm not sure how much we already discussed that, but an update on the district bar and for the high school, which field and the oil tank.
Did, did we answer all of your questions, or did you have?
Yeah, I think Rob did.
Okay.
Okay, cool, alright. The next agenda item is one that the town of Bolton, myself put on, was sort of district mandatory reporting practices. And I guess this is related to a number of incidents of vandalism that took place at the high school in the past, and that's to recent past, where town officials were not necessarily notifying immediately about those particular incidents.
So, so we came prepared to talk about mandatory reporting because that's what's on here. So I think that, I think that's what we'll speak to, and then if there are other questions, then we're happy to answer them after.
Well, sure, that's fine.
Okay, so Joan DeAngelis is our, basically our, she's our director of pupil personnel services, but she also has to oversee all of our mandated reporting. And so she's gonna speak tonight, just quickly about fifty-one A's and such, because that's what we thought was asking for. So I'll turn it over to Joan, then if you've got questions.
I brought the law and the regulations so that you could.
So what's fifty-one A?
So, mandatory reporting under the law is that mandatory reporters include people such as school officials, physicians, nurses, therapists, police, fire. So we're all under the law, expected that if we are aware of a child that's being neglected or abused, if there's suspicion of such, that we have to report that to the Department of Children and Families under the mandatory reporting law.
And we, we do that, I think, I, I think we do that very thoughtfully, we're cautious with how we, we do it. I think the key is that there has to be substantial suspicion in order to do that. You can't do it on hearsay, you can't do it anything like, on rumor, you can't do it on any of that, there has to be something absolutely tangible in order to do that.
There needs to be evidence that you can provide through telephone calls, so you call in what's called a fifty-one A. There's actually a report that you need to fill out of what you have, that the suspected abuse and neglect is. And then DCF makes the determination of, are they screening it in and they can get warrants and investigation? Or are they screening it out to say, you know, we don't believe we need to investigate? So our, our job is kind of not to play judge or jury, we leave the investigation to DCF and then they make the determination about what the next steps are around the reporting.
There were, there were some incidents at the high school where, as I understand it, it's a legal requirement to report these incidents that they occurred to the police and/or the fire department, depending on the nature of the incident. And that's not been occurring.
So I don't know if those incidents you're referring to are under the umbrella of child abuse and neglect. So I'm not sure what incidents.
My understanding is that we're not.
So these, this is about like kids being abused or neglected at home?
Right.
But what we're talking about are incidents in the school during the school day? And how those are reported.
Where a student did something to damage the school or violated some other, I guess, law for lack of a more precise term. And it's our understanding that the school district should be aware of, of situations like that and that they should be reported to the police or fire department immediately after the situation's under control. And in fact, there were days and days of, as a matter of fact, the police officials, this, the safety officials in Bolton had to go to the school, as opposed to the school coming to the safety officials. And that's what we're inquiring about and wondering what's been done to remedy that.
So I, this is the mandatory reporting law for child abuse and neglect, so that's what I'm kind of talking about. So I think that what you're talking about.
Is it different?
Is different, right, like when do we report things, either to the police or fire officials?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Doesn't that come under your umbrella? Even though you're doing child, it's got to have the, the whole school.
Well, this is about child abuse and neglect, so if that issue comes up typically, I do get a call and we talk about, you know, what the incident is.
Who, who there reports to the, to the safety officials?
Well, that, that work is generally done at the, at the principal level, it's not done at the superintendent's level, it's done at the principal level. And if it's, if it's this kind of thing, it goes through Joan.
Well, we're not talking about child abuse, we're talking about vandalism.
Right, and I'm still saying the same thing, it's the principals that file the fifty-one A's or they are the, so the mandated reporters.
Were there now, so I heard somewhere there were great fire concerns?
There, there was, there was a, you're, no, you're absolutely correct, you're absolutely correct, there was a paper towel that had been set on fire, you're absolutely right. And that, and I think that that's probably where this is coming from, because it's, I'm sitting here. Yeah, because that was, I think they found that, well, actually, I think you had some involvement on that too, now that I'm thinking of it. I believe that happened at two o'clock in the afternoon on Friday, and.
Captured there were three events on an hour.
It was, yeah, it was the same thing, it was two, am I correct, Bob? It was two paper towels, right?
No, well, we don't know because there was no evidence, we do know that there were three different events.
Because I think it's captured on video, and so if memory serves me right.
It occurred in the boys' restroom, so I can't imagine it's on video, there's no cameras.
No, I believe it, no, no, I believe there was a, there was a child that they videotaped.
That, I don't, I don't know, I know there was something that was recorded, I know it was one of the fire events, the fire chief has said, we, you know, we have no evidence.
Okay, I'll go back and take a look at that then, and see, I haven't seen the video, I'm just sure that I heard that there was one out there. Anyway, so that, to that end, Steve Cullinan, who was new principal, did reach out Monday morning, so there's, there was your, your time, your days that you're speaking of, so you're right, that, he did not connect with them on the Friday night, he connected with them on the Monday morning.
I'm sorry, but that's not true.
Oh, okay.
That's not true, our fire chief found out from our police chief, and he went to the high school to see Steve to discuss it with him. So he, our chief did not.
Was that Monday morning or?
That was Monday afternoon by the time he got down there.
Okay, then that would be different than what I've heard, yeah.
So was that something you can help us with?
Yeah, actually, we did a review at the high school on June, January second of the fifty-one A, in general, like all of this. We, we did a review with all the staff, so that was like the first day back after the.
Including the non-child abuse.
Yes, the whole thing was, the whole thing was already.
According to police officials or fire officials.
Okay.
So steps are being taken to, to?
That's all three communities running this?
Running this situation, because I know our, our fire and police chief weren't necessarily thrilled with how that was handled.
We understand that, and they've shared that with us.
Okay.
Sure.
No, they have every right to, I mean, I absolutely understand that.
Okay, alright. Any, Joan, anything else on this one?
No.
Alright. Next one is district discretionary funds and allocations, this is another one that Bolton Board of Selectmen and myself put in. And I guess, I guess part and parcel with some of the discussion we had earlier about some of the lost grant funding, and we actually went through a whole list of the number of repairs that have been, need to be done at the school. I was a bit concerned and somewhat dismayed that there was an agreed-upon schedule put in place some time ago, and especially before the, it was voted to do the stabilization fund for full-day kindergarten, but there was a schedule in place to get full-day K implemented at the school. And I guess, you know, it being so close to coming up with the budget, the budget season FY twenty-one, that it appeared that, obviously, that schedule has been accelerated.
By one year, you're correct.
By one year, you know, due, due to the, you know, the finding of some additional funding, you know, whether that was healthcare or whatever, but anyway, additional funding. But a concern that that was done in somewhat of a vacuum, and not necessarily looking at potentially that surplus funding, where it could be applied, if, if it might need it to be applied, given the fact that there was an agreed-upon schedule to get full-day K implemented. And, you know, obviously, you accelerated that, but now you've encumbered that funding, and, you know, you just said you've lost grant funding and we have repairs at the high school. So I mean, you know, it was, I'm concerned about the timing of that.
And I think that we had, and I'm very respectful of that. I think the other thing that we were reflecting on too is the fact that we continue to lose money every year. Like this year, had we been in the K queue up already, we, we have left a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the table this year because we weren't. So every year that we are not getting the appropriate reimbursement for K, we continue to go behind in that program every single year. So you, you kind of looked at it, and we looked at it and said, it was, we knew it was three hundred thousand, and we knew that that would pay itself off inside of two years. So for us, it made total sense to ramp it up by the one year. The other thing I would say too is I don't know that we ever agreed on the schedule, I think I laid it out, and then, because I don't ever, I don't think we ever took a vote on it or anything like that. I laid it out as a three-year, there was discussion on it, but I don't think we ever came to any type of agreement as such and said, this is what we're gonna do. So I don't think that that was how we were operating at all, so when we saw this and we knew how much money we were leaving on the table every year, it didn't make sense because that's state money that we would have had in our pockets right now. So to us, it's, it's almost like a wash, quite frankly, between this year and next year.
And if I could, I don't know what you see this or understand this, done in a vacuum because we have talked about it extensively at school committee, went back and forth. We did not have, and this is a, there are four new people on the school committee, so there was a complete, almost a pre-terrible work and differences of opinion. And, and I, I'm actually the senior member of the school committee, I've been there for five years. Four years ago, it came to light that none of our programs that should be cost recovery were indeed cost recovery, extended day, we were subsidizing to keep the boat float, pre-K, integrated pre-K, we were subsidizing, and full-day K, none of the tuitions covered the cost. And it wasn't until we had our forensic audit that it came to light that we were paying upwards of six hundred thousand dollars a year because the tuitions were established maybe ten years previously and never increased. So we, I think right now, extended day is cost recovery, but we have every year increased, we'd had a big increase the first year and then agreed that we would increase them by two percent every year, which we have done. We have organized our integrated preschool to be in line with state regulations. The premise of that program is to support preschool students who are on IEPs and, and put them with what we call typical students, and there's a certain ratio. But for many years, it was run essentially as a preschool, and we would have classes in the three towns with no special education students in them. So we, that was revamped, and I, I think it's, it's cost recovery now in terms of, you know, we pay for sped kids, but the tuitions cover the cost of the other kids that are in it. But full-day K still does not, the tuition that we take in does not cover the cost, so we are.
I'm fully aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, but we are paying for it, and so, and it's hard to, you know, you look at what's out there, you know, from Olped, which will, you know, I don't see us ever.
But all of that, all of that information about the pre-K was known to you. was known to you before you came to us and explained that this was going to be a three-year program. And basically, no one has demonstrated any, here's a new information or here's something that changed perspective. It was the same information that you'd had available at the time you came to us, and all of a sudden, this particular fact takes on an importance that it didn't have before.
Oh, no, I'm not...
And so it changed the decision.
It's a point of clarification from my point of view because I think that many people on the school committee aren't aware or in the communities of the subsidies that went on essentially for people who are participating in this. I'm not, I'm not, I understand that you feel that we reneged on an agreement. But looking at it from my lens, from an educational point of view, understanding that have a fiduciary responsibility at the time of Lancaster, there was an opportunity, given the fact that we had established a stabilization fund from revolving account money that had not been utilized. And now we have an opportunity to accelerate this, the acquisition of this program by one year. And the school committee voted to take advantage of it. Now, there will be some, given whatever that, you know, funding is, the school committee and the discussions have talked about it being a priority to bring down the cost of what the towns had expected to pay for the rich field and the oil tank. So once the E and D funds are certified, then we'll take another look. We'll look at the money that we got and what's left over. But that's our goal, to do that.
Okay, but this found money.
Yes.
What's the difference between that and your excess and deficiency fund?
I'm not sure that I understood your question.
It's not in the excess.
It's the money, like we, we set up a stabilization fund last year.
No, no, that's not...
We're talking about the excess money that you found and that you decided to apply.
Okay.
What's the difference between that and excess and deficiency?
It's not in the excess and deficiency.
Not as, not as...
Now, we would have to go into it, you want for us to access it.
I thought excess and deficiency was, excess was all the funds above that you have unallocated at the end of the year, up to 5% of your budget.
That's right.
All right? And anything above that has to be automatically reapplied as revenue for the following year. Okay, so...
We're nowhere near that, that's our goal.
Okay, so, all right. Then if you're nowhere near that, I'm even more confused about how you can take excess money and just put it someplace else when you could be using it, again, to lower the allocations that are going to be coming down the pipe in the next four or five weeks.
Right, and we do that every year anyway because we pull money out of the E and D every year to put towards our budget, right? Like every year, that's a piece of...
Well, that's, that's, yes. Every year, we hear, we're damaging our excess and deficiency because you townies are making us, you don't use the word townies.
I was just saying, yeah.
You do not use the word townies. I'm, right? Yeah, but, you know, you folks in the town finance areas, you make us dip into the E and D. It's always hurting us. It's putting us in danger.
Oh, my goodness, no.
Excuse me, but please, it's not the tone that we adopt. I mean, you're painting a picture here that's adversarial, and I've never felt that. I get it, I get that we, you know, the concerns about how the budgets go up and down. But the tone is not accurate from my point of view. And I think that I've never felt that we're under the gun by the towns to do anything. In fact, the towns have been very supportive and generous toward the schools historically, and you've given us the number tonight. And that's what we have...
Quite frankly, that's what we did last year because we worked towards Bolton's number last year because it was, it was the tough one to get to. And that was our goal to get to that number. And what we did was exactly what you're saying. We pulled out of E and D to put in it because it's like almost a dollar-to-dollar ratio. So that's exactly, but I never would have thought that that was a negative thing to do at all. Like, I'm just putting that out there because I think people would have thought that.
All right.
I think the issue is that there was a schedule. You have decided to move it a year ahead. There was 100 grand that was going to be allocated in the FY21 budget to put in the stabilization fund, which was, everyone was aware of that. But now, you know, you've come into an additional pot of money. And the last pot of money outside of the allocations went towards the stabilization fund for this. So in the last two instances of finding found money, your highest priority has been to put it into a stabilization fund to allocate for Full Day Kindergarten, and that's fine. But we had, we had a sort of gentleman's agreement that there was a schedule. And we had an anticipation that Full Day K would start at this point. And it's now starting a year early.
Right.
In the void of looking at everything else relative to what you might need as far as funding for the FY21 budget, I think that's where our concern is.
So you would have had us leave that $150,000 on the table? Because that's what would have happened.
Or, no, take that, whatever the, whatever the found money you had, potentially, you might need it for something else.
But I'm just saying, we would, we're losing in this current year $150,000 in reimbursement that we could have planned had we already been in that program for this year. And that's why I'm saying $150,000 over the two years is a $300,000. So it's honestly just a wash of money.
Well, you can, you can say it's a wash of money, but...
I mean, just in terms of...
Right, I mean, it's almost like, you know, I really need to buy this color TV set now because I'm gonna get a rebate and something like that, you know, as opposed to buying it later. So, I mean, you can kind of work the things the way you want. And I understand that, you know, looking at it from one lens, that makes perfect sense.
From a fiscal lens, yeah.
Right, but looking at it from another lens, we have an FY21 budget, school budget that we have to deal with.
Right.
You know, and that's, that's another perspective.
I totally, I totally understand that.
And my understanding is that this discussion really didn't get started until this fall. Because I know you went to one of the initial meetings that...
I'm sorry, the fall.
The fall, where this was discussed. And I believe you raised some valid points at one of the school committee meetings that exactly conversation what happened here this evening.
So are you thinking that we just started key discussion in this fall?
No, to accelerate, to accelerate it.
Right.
To accelerate it.
Right, by the one year. And like I say, when we realized the money, and we realized the money that we were losing in this year and projected loss for next year, it didn't make sense for us to wait another year. So because it was 150 this year and 150 next year. So that, that was your $300,000. So it didn't make fiscal sense for us. Regardless of the philosophical, I mean, as educators, of course, philosophical is its own thing. But fiscally, it didn't make sense. We could have done it, but it wouldn't have made sense because we're already leaving $150,000 on the table this year by not being in this program.
Yes, but you're now taking away several hundred thousand dollars that could be applied to the FY21 budget that you don't...
But I'm good if you, not I...
No, it's not going into E and D then, isn't that...
Well, the other, the other funds are, I don't know if he's talking about the same funds. I was with you.
So are you talking about the, you refer to it as found money?
Yes.
So that so-called found money would go into E and D. We can't access it until it's in E and D, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so the impact that E and D would have on FY21 would be whatever money that we would typically take from E and D to put toward the budget, to bring down the assessments.
Right, which would do us...
But you have, you have that much less now because you're accelerating...
Right, but we're getting back though. We'll be getting back like the one year behind, that $150,000 right back. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but that won't be applied to the 21 budget. That'll, that'll go into your free cash and you use it 22.
Right.
So what I'm hearing is that you don't agree with the fact that we amped up the program by one year? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that a good way to say it? At least allow me to put words in your mouth.
We, I, my words would be, I'm not sure that was the best use of the money.
Okay.
So does it become moot if we meet the 3%? You said that that's your goal, the 3%? If we get to 3%...
Well, you know, to a certain extent, it's moot because you've already done it, right? But certainly, the 3% is what we need. You know, we're not gonna be able to do any, we're not gonna be able to move ahead with more than that.
Mm-hmm.
If it all pans out, that'd be great. But I don't think we know that yet. Right, I mean, you just told us, you have no idea.
For revenue coming in now.
Right, you have no idea, so let's...
We never know what's going to happen here.
Let's hope for the best. All right, I think we've...
Beat that voice.
Yeah, that's a good way to say it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You've got to finish the place.
Well, this might be sort of a bomb that I'm dropping. I don't mean to, but I'm just curious. I'm just curious. Somebody mentioned the impact of the Minuteman building project on assessments to the town. And I know that I had a conversation maybe last year, before, with Stan in Orlando about Minuteman and Lancaster. There are 50 kids in Lancaster that go. And the per pupil expenditure works out to like $32,000 a kid for Minuteman. But then if you just look at Lancaster's allocation in the Shobur, it's about $13,000 for the approximately 1,000 kids in Lancaster that go. So, and I know we're spending a lot, and it's important, and I get it. I've been an education my whole life, and for some reason, I decided to be on the school committee and just go along, the agony. I'm just, I'm just curious about the nature of the conversations with Minuteman to rein in their budget. Because I looked, and again, looking strictly through Lancaster's lens, over a five-year period of time, their increases to the budget as it would impact Lancaster was like double digits. Okay, so it was like 11%, but that's a lot. So how, is it separate? Do we not do this with them? Is there, because it's that expensive? If, is there any talk about looking at other schools like Minuteman, like Monty Tech or Asabet? I think the towns could probably save some money. Your grandfather, the kids that are already there through. So it just seems, and I'm being a middle school child now, it just doesn't seem fair that Minuteman seems to get a buy. And this is, yes.
I was, I was on the town finance committee when, here in Bolton, when the Minuteman project first started bubbling up and getting active. And one of the things the finance committee did was to say, okay, we're not qualified to say what school district does this, that, or the other thing better. But it'd be interesting for the finance committee to have some answers on costs relative to Minuteman versus Asabet versus Monty Tech versus Nishoba Valley. Basically, we went to Don, who made some inquiries. They were all overbooked and were not going to take students from any other area.
Yeah, Monty Tech had a, at the time, Monty Tech had a waitlist of over 100 kids. Asabet was full and still is. Nishoba Valley had some room, but wasn't terribly attractive to us. I have, I personally have this conversation with Ed Bullquill every year. I had it as recently as today, wanting to know what we should be using for a plug number, which he gave me and said they're trending downwards from the plug number, which was good news. But Bolton, Bolton hasn't experienced the same pain that Lancaster has.
I was about to ask you, what number of students do you got going?
Normally, it's 11.
11.
10 or 11 every year.
52?
Yeah.
Is that our number?
And our percentage increases, our percentage increases have been very small. Of course, now with the building project and the debt and all that, but that's different than operating expenses.
And I think that's why some of the impact is more major when people tell me, oh, my God, we're paying a college raise over having to send them here. There's no relief in sight. And like as Don had mentioned, there's no room in the end at the time. And we would have made the move a couple of years ago.
Yeah, well, every town had the opportunity to opt out when the district agreement was redone.
That's right.
The nine, seven got out and nine remained.
And the state requires every town to be affiliated? Is that the right word? With one vocational...
Well, I don't know that you have to be affiliated, but you have to provide it. You have to provide, you have to pay for vocational education.
One of the issues that came up at that time was making sure that schools who were opting in later were helping to pay for the construction.
Oh, towns, yes, yes. That's right, the towns would have to assume their fair share of the debt.
So is that happening?
Well, we don't have new towns in yet. We have the, we have the nine legacy communities, if you will. And, but we do have a formula that was approved by DESI that we can charge.
So if Arlington comes crawling back?
If Arlington came back or if Waltham decided they finally wanted to join.
They have a waiting list.
There is, and that's, there is a waiting list.
Minuteman has a waiting list, so there's, there's no opportunity for a bunch of students to, from any particular town to get in there.
So it's filled with the original towns that are subscribed.
Yep.
Just had to ask.
Yeah, no, we went to the...
Sure, question.
Hey, no one's trying to pick on anybody. But last year, I don't mean very blunt, last year was the tipping point for Bolton. You know, 65% of our budget is going to you guys. We are, last year, we were at a tipping point. We had, we had severe issues in terms of trying to balance the budget. We normally try to keep at the end, when we're done, about $325,000 in free cash. And that's way down from years ago. You know, I've been doing this for a long time. We used to have, you know, seven figures left over. And that, those days are gone now because we've squeezed our budget down where there's, you know, there's no, nothing left at the end of the year to replenish free cash.
We literally have $125,000 in free cash.
So we went, we went way down in free cash last year, about $125,000. So we're at a tipping point. And the fact that we're a bedroom community, you know, we don't have a lot of business, this, that, the other thing, so...
No state aid.
And no state aid, which, which actually is a good thing. And that's one of the things that Stanford and Porres really looked at and was happy that we have very little state aid because that's one of the things that contributed to our triple bond rating. But we hit a tipping point last year, and it's only going to get worse. So, you know, we, we have to be very mindful of everything because the last thing that, you know, that any of us want to do is to, you know, to go beyond on two and a half. So that's, so we're not picking on you, but, you know, we, we're watching every single dollar. And we just get concerned, obviously, the biggest driver of the budget is the district. And that's just, that's just, you know, obviously, the reality of the situation, so.
And one data point that folks may or may not find interesting is that when we got our bond rating increase like Stanford and Porres from AA to AAA, there were two, two of the major factors that drove that decision for them was, one, our commitment to funding Olped. They were very clear, they would not have given us that increase if we were not funding Olped. And, two, that we have such a small reliance on state aid. So while it's bad news for us that we don't get more state aid, they see us as, you know, that much more stable financial position because we're not at the mercy of, you know, of the vagaries of state aid.
Yeah, and just picking up the team again, you beat us by, well, we beat you, so to speak, in the tipping point. That happened to us last year. We were deficitated again, extraordinary expenses, higher than average out of free cash and some income, 150, 200 from filming within the community. Otherwise, we'll be, and we're going to be there again with this, even with 3%. We're going to be sitting at, between the two years and a half million dollar deficit. We don't have it. We have to rely on a development that's two years out in North Lancaster. That's the only saver that Stana Lancaster is going to have. And the more people recognize that, the better off we'll be as a town to understand that. So that's my little syllable quick for the evening. I do have one other question, Mr. Chairman, and I'm related perhaps to discretionary funds, if I may.
Sure, please.
Is there a defined source of funding for the ongoing investigation for the alleged teacher's misconduct? Has that been accounted for within the budget? Is that some expense of the district?
The investigation?
Of a, you show a regional teacher's misconduct.
The independent investigation that's right now, that independent investigation is just looking at like a small window of time. And that's, I don't know how close it is to wrapping up.
I have no idea, but if we, at the outset... I have no idea, but if we, at the outset, the, the individual that we hired indicated that this would, he didn't have consecutive time to deal with it, he would be fitting it in. And so there have been updates the last two school committee meetings. So the amount of time does not equate to the amount of money we're going to spend. So if it's been a month, he's not charging us for a month's worth of time, he charges us.
Yeah, I, I'd sooner say this is asking, who's paying for it?
That's coming out of, it's, it's in the FY twenty budget.
It's my budget?
But, well, it hasn't been budgeted.
Budget is a big question.
I don't know if it's legal expenses.
It's a legal expense, we, we have money.
What's being budgeted for that item?
Well, general, generally, all of our legal expenses and we upped it last year.
Yeah, but for something extraordinary, maybe this is the next term, I think it is, but what do I know? There's no numbers associated with just that particular carbon investigation.
No, there isn't. It wasn't like, that isn't how we came to the number. Typically, that legal line is.
Okay, well, your legal funds.
Right, just in, yeah.
Hopefully it won't be the other, hopefully.
Well, I guess it's a corollary to the corollary. My understanding is that, you know, due to the situation, the district has hired a public relations firm?
We, we did under, with guidance from our legal counsel.
So I guess maybe the other question is, you know, where is that money coming from? Is that being accounted?
That's on contract, yeah, contract to services line, yeah. So it's, it's in there as well.
Is that, that firm still being retained?
They're on retainer, but we're not using them right now, so they're just kind of sitting tight because we're not sure what's going to happen between now and the end of the year. So they're just, you know, sit and hold.
Gotcha, okay, all right. Anything else relative to that? I guess the next up is discuss the frequency of future meetings since we managed to get this.
Maybe two years is a good.
So January twenty twenty-two?
Put it in my calendar right now.
It's on my line, Bob.
I mean, since you're having a workshop at the end of January, does it make sense to have something scheduled for potentially next month?
It's completely up to you, like I would, where are you at?
The budget will be, the allocations to the town are going to come out when?
It's usually the last week of January, I, I will probably be.
Yeah, so sometime in February.
Probably Friday night before the Saturday. That's typically actually what happens.
That's what happens every year.
So whenever the off Wednesday is in between the school committee meetings, I guess would be the night.
Okay.
So school committee in February is the, the twelfth and the twenty-sixth after.
And you have vacation week in the middle here.
That's correct.
Yeah, school committee is the twelfth and the twenty-sixth of February.
Will that be a Lancaster host for the meeting?
We would love it.
Yeah.
Would you put the signer on ice?
I was putting it out in the air.
He hasn't fomented that.
So if the vacation week is the week of the.
Seventeenth.
Yeah, then I'm wondering if March fourth is the meeting, because the school committee's meeting the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. So it'd either be the fifth, you'd have to have it early on the fifth of February or later on March fourth.
I'd say March fourth.
I mean, as needed, you know, I don't, you know, much as I love this conversation, it's, it's necessary, it's great, it proves, and this is a very fruitful meeting, I thought this evening, even though there's some limitations on what we all know.
Yep.
All right.
Let's shoot for March fourth then. And would you, would you like to take the signer now or should I?
I've already, I've had my allocation taken. Could you check with?
So it's the fourth at seven o'clock?
Yes.
Did we get a date? Three, five, March fourth?
And it's going to be at one thirty, yeah.
Yeah. National Room. The newly renovated National Room, Prescott Building, Lancaster, home of the patriots.
The town hall came in beautifully, I thought.
I'd say the same, but the Prescott Building was.
I'm sorry, the Prescott Building, I thought, well, where the town offices are now, I'm sorry.
Town Hall is crumbling.
I thought it came on really, really nicely.
It did, it did a great job, it really is very impressive.
Any other new business or anything else anybody would like to bring up before we adjourn?
Oh, I should just add for everyone's edification and that, back at the November meeting that we had, the TA said with Brooke, my colleagues voted me in by affirmation to be the municipal rep again for future contract negotiations, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah. I, I had lawn signs all over the place. Last time I did that, I didn't win, but, so just so you know, whenever negotiation get, get started, I'll be enjoying your company again.
Okay, cool. All right, well, thank you very much, everyone.
Move to adjourns.
Move to adjourn, everyone on March fourth.
Thank you, thank you.
We always do something proper, right? That's the same, it can't be earlier than that.